Second, 2014. Uh, we have a couple of primary things to discuss today. Before we get started, we'll go ahead and welcome all of you. Really appreciate your participation in this process. We're making a lot of very important decisions for this county that are to a great extent going to govern the future of our county. And how's it gonna develop or if it will develop? And what kind of place is it gonna be for all of us to live in, work in, and have our kids grow up in? So I think those are very important things to remember. I'm a hundred percent convinced that everyone here wants what's best for Carnes County. I'm also a hundred percent convinced that everybody doesn't think the same way to get there. Like, you know, and that doesn't mean that the other side is evil, stupid, or crazy. You know, people have different ideas on how to get things done. And, uh, we can have better political discourse in this country if we realize that and realize that we're Muslims aiming for the same goals, to make this a great place. Uh, but we just have different ideas about how to get there. So we're gonna go through a discussion initially of the budget, and then we'll get to the tax rate. The budget we're gonna analyze line by line, item by item. Uh, we're gonna have department heads present differing ideas they may have from the proposed budget. I may have some modified ideas, like I know I do, about the proposed budget. And, uh, what I'm hoping is that all of us here today can reach a consensus, you know, where we feel, all of us, can support what overall is being done. You're not going to agree with every line of the budget, no way. You're not gonna agree with every, you know, point in the tax rate. Well, let's see if we can reach consensus that everybody feels is reasonable, it's been thought out, it's been discussed among all of us, that we can all live with. Okay? Let's have a prayer. Oh, before we do that, let me follow the roll. Commissioner Shimmel.
Here.
Mr. Duke.
There.
Mr. Rosales.
Here.
In Commissioner Yar.
Here.
I'm Richard Butler, I'm here as well. Dear Lord, uh, as I stated earlier, we know this is a very important time for Carnes County. A county you have blessed with unbelievable mineral wealth in a very, very short time. We've seen the countryside change, we've seen our people change, we've seen a lot of things change. And, uh, we're all trying our best to adapt to those changes, to move the county forward, as I said, make it a great place to live, and a good place for your kids to come back to. Please, uh, watch over us today, help us make none of the wisest decisions, but to make them in ways and to discuss among each other the various things we've got to discuss in ways that, uh, that build a consensus and build harmony among our citizens. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I plead into the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had, uh, last week, our first hearing on the budget, the proposed county, I mean for, uh, tax rate, Rose County Tax Rate. There are two hearings required for the tax rate. That was the first one. This is going to be the second one. We also have to have a single hearing for the budget. This is the budget here. And, uh, what we'll do today is go through our proposed budget, discuss it. Uh, the order I'd like to do it in is this. I'll introduce the particular budget item. We'll do that department by department. And I'll ask for input from any of the commissioners. Actually, the thing we'll do first is ask if there's any input from the department head who is present. Department head can come up and tell us about any modifications he might like to have, and that department will analyze that. Then we'll have a discussion amongst commissioners, and then we'll invite comment from the citizens on that particular department. And, uh, that's how we'll do it. Yes, ma'am?
I need you to sign a paper to be heard, and I'd like to be heard before this gets started.
I'm not gonna insist on compliance with that.
I don't have a complaint, I just have something I'm gonna say.
Yeah, but I mean, no, I'm not going to insist that you sign if you wanna say something. If you're able to say something. I'm pretty loose in my interpretation of rules and allowing people to speak. Uh, I'm not gonna put any strict time limits on you. I will say that we've got a lot to cover today, and we're going to get it covered. Rather than be up here at eleven or twelve tonight, we're gonna have to move things along a little bit. So, you know, I'll be, I'll be patient with you, but if we, if we get into a commentary that's taking so long that I know we're not gonna be able to finish, I'll have to ask you to wrap up. But don't worry about signing something that's to give yourself a right to speak before I turn you up to write a speech. Okay?
May I speak now, then?
Uh, I'd like to get into-
It has nothing to do with any line items.
Okay. Well, yes, ma'am. Room break, please. What?
I don't have any notes.
Okay.
But since I've been coming to these meetings, I've realized in the last few years, just a couple of years, there's been a lot of money wasted because people didn't check things twice. When they, when we sign up to do a building, you've gotta read the fine print. And as far as financial matters go in this county, y'all are the keepers of the keys, and y'all have gotta start doing your jobs. I don't mean to offend anybody, but it's the commissioner's court to make sure that the money is right in this county. So you've gotta start paying attention to it. And that's all I have to say right now.
Well, thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Uh, we're gonna go to item number six. Public hearing to discuss budget for the fiscal year 2014-15 for the Carnes County, Get my budget. Now, the budget was, I guess you'd say tangentially discussed in our meeting on the tax rate today. If I had my say, I think there'd be two hearings on the budget and one on the tax rate, because I, the way I look at it is the tax rate is driven by the budget. What, the budget says, here's what we need to meet the needs for County. And then, once you're agreed, once you reach an agreement on what those needs are, and then you decide what tax rate will support that budget. And, uh, that's how I'd like to approach that today. Keeping in mind that I had heard the input of citizens who felt like the tax rate going to thirty cents, uh, per $100 valuation was excessive. Uh, my personal belief is that's not true, but I've heard, you know, quite a few citizens that have indicated that thought that was true. And so we're taking that into consideration. I will have, as we go through this budget, some modifications that I think were, could, you know, my recommendation is we adopt the budget we have. But I've got some modifications that if we adopted, they could get this tax rate down much lower towards a rollback rate. And so I want everybody to listen to that as an alternative and see if that's something that sounds acceptable to you. All right? I think really the last thing we need to do as a county is to have a range war out here over our tax rate. Now, some I would like to, if I could do anything while I'm here, is to get some unity among the people in this county and in purpose, where we're going, what we wanna do, forward thinking instead of, uh, you know, fighting each other. 'Cause that's not very productive. Uh, we need to be on the same track as close as possible and move forward. Now, the, uh, budget, the fiscal budget itself, let's go to the first department. Find that on page six. Can't even get it. What comes in this one page? First department to be on page. I need pages four and five. I don't know. I've gone through this thing several times, scattered papers, I lost them. Here's another one. Thanks. All right, let's see. First one is the County Judge Department's estimated budget. The only thing that I have to say about that is there's a, like, a, the salary survey included in this budget, a, um, a $300 a year or something like that increase in the salary of the county judge. I don't want any of that if my successor wants it, he can have it. I, I don't wanna be paid any additional money for working for the county for the brief time I have. My learning curve has been pretty steep, so I haven't exactly gotten up to speed as quickly as I should have. Uh, so I do wanna change that to just take out the salary increase for the judge. And Walter is here, I'd ask for Walter and Maurice's consent on that. And I think that all of the elected official salaries next year need to be reviewed carefully. And I think the reason of that is this. We want to have qualified, good kind of people run public office in this county. I hear people a lot of times, and I used to be one of them, would complain about, oh, this county officially doesn't do this, and you have, well, you're either gonna have to elect people who don't need the money, you know, who are qualified but don't need money so they're not worried about what the salary is, or you're gonna have to elect people and be able to pay them a salary that will attract them to public service. You know, you really do. And, uh, to expect that you can pay next to nothing and get good quality people to run, you'll have some that will, but it's the exception to the rule. So I think next year in this budget, and I really didn't do much of that this year, next year, that really needs to be reviewed so that you're paying realistic salaries. I don't think there's any other significant changes. Does anybody have any comments on the County Judge Department's estimated budget? Do we have a consensus among the council, I mean, not council, among commissioners that that's what we'll approve?
Yes.
Okay. We will not formally approve this budget until Friday, but due to open meetings requirements and such, we can't huddle together somewhere on campus and decide what to do, so we're kind of, uh, I wanna make sure that we don't go into Friday and have some kind of problem. Next, we go to, oh, before I go this any further, let me tell you this. I went back through the, uh, survey, the salary survey we had performed by seeking and discovered after I'd already, uh, proposed a budget, that there are some changes in some of the employees' salaries that need to be made. They were not lifted to the mid-level that I was seeking to obtain. And, uh, I have asked, we recalculate that, uh, so that, that all of the employees will be receiving mid-level pay under that survey, uh, except they can't get more than a fifteen percent raise in a given year. That's kind of a standard in employment, that you don't bump somebody up twenty-five, thirty percent the same year. Those people are still going to be below that mid-level standard if they're capped at fifteen percent, should be addressed in subsequent years. They, they should be something that you look at in subsequent years. The effect across the entire, uh, scope of the employees, uh, the auditor is calculated, and that would be how much over this year's salaries. And keep in mind, there's also, I think, twenty-two new people, who would be our, most of whom are really working, new judges. Uh, so it's not all just pay increases, there's also a bunch of employee numbers coming up.
It's approximately $584,000 increase over this current budget year, including the twenty-two positions.
And that would be over the proposed budget or over this year?
No, over fiscal year fourteen.
Okay. All right. The way I looked at that is basically what I was saying about, uh, county officers. You wanna attract good people. We heard a lot of comments about this department, that department personnel, local defender doing this. And I understand that that kind of thing can happen, uh, in private business as well as in government. And we need to guard against that. That's the absolute responsibility of every department head, is to get the most productivity they can out of their people. By the same token, if you don't offer a decent living wage to people, you can't attract a quality candidates. I've worked in professional life for a long time, this is my first public job, but I worked, uh, in law firms for a long time. And, uh, all the managers of those law firms made sure that we paid our secretaries, our paralegals, our, all our staff people, our county staff, at good levels of pay. Not necessarily the very highest, but, but very competitive with the highest. And that, you know, they all always expressed to me is that you get what you pay for. And if you don't offer good pay to people, you cannot count on getting good work from those people. So I, I believe we need to do that. It would be inexcusable for a county with the wealth that's flowing around this place now to try to, to try to hold their employees down and keep the county employees poorly paid. We'll surely regret that decision as time goes by, because the employment picture here now is much different. People can get jobs somewhere other than the county, and, uh, they might well do it, and have been doing it, uh, where they cannot make a living for their family working in the county. You all have any discussion about that? I think it will address some of the issues some departments have, have had in discussions with me about the pay for their departments. It's gonna elevate the pay of a lot of your people. It's gonna equalize pay among certain departments and will, I think, be a good starting point for us. Now, we'll get in later talking about the proposed HR department. I want this HR department to perform every year detailed job performance evaluations. Uh, I've worked for a company where that didn't happen, and we need it. And, uh, this provides a little insulation too for the department head. Look, when you're a department head, you're working for somebody, it's awful hard to pull the trigger on firing or discipline somebody. It really is. And, uh, you know, you develop a relationship with that person, whatever, and it's difficult to say, look, you that aren't getting it done, get out of here. Some people can do it real easily, but some can't. And, uh, we wanna have them a projective observer in this HR department that will be able to pull that plug and to be able to make it a little more comfortable for both the employee and for the department head. So the department head won't be out of the picture, but they'll be involved with the HR director, and they'll be a, have an insulator there. The county clerk's budget. Now, as I go through these, if a department head is here and wants to discuss changes they would like to propose, step forward, let us hear it. So county clerk, please, sitting right there.
Yeah, the only-
And you might wanna wait and see, there, you know, I'm not gonna tell you not to speak on it, but there are gonna be some adjustments to salaries within your department.
Okay. That, that was my only, that was the only request I had, to see where that would fall.
Where all the expenses, you feel that this is, this is enough? I understand that we've lumped everybody's computers into the IT department.
Yes.
But, uh, everything else looks satisfactory to you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner, do you have any questions?
Carol, what is your, the money you're, in your budget, what do you plan to accomplish this year?
With which part?
With, with your whole budget. Basically, from your department, what do you plan to do with, with the $313,000?
The most important thing is to continue the daily operations of the land man and the public, to get their documents, to record their documents, to purchase birth certificates, death certificates, marriage licenses. Um, can I talk about it? Um, and then the rest of it, we're gonna continue on with the, um, records management, records archiving. Uh, I have some conference expenses in there. I usually try to send one or two clerks to different conferences so that they have the knowledge too of the bi statisticians, uh, issues that we have, or, um, you know, there's a lot of different things that they need to know too, so.
And you do, your clerks do serve a function in the judicial, they, they come in and they act as clerk of the court, of the county court, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right.
With the, uh, e-filing things, y'all are gonna, with the proposed higher stuff, y'all are gonna be, uh, ready to go, or?
We will be getting prepared for that to begin in 2016.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, starting this January one, 2016, all county courts and district clerks in the state of Texas, the clerks will now be required to accept wireless filings. It's, uh, it's been going on federal court for a while. Instead of turning in a paper saying I'm suing somebody and filing all the responses to it, or anything, you file wireless, and you send it to them by email basically as an attachment. And that document gets filed wireless. In the long run, it's going to be cheaper, faster, more efficient, and it'll be great. But in the short run, it involves a lot, a big learning curve, you know, to do it that way, both for the lawyers involved. I know lawyers still send in written stuff to the federal courts to get it sent back to them, say, we don't take this stuff anymore. And so there, there'll be some times, you know, it'll take a while to get into it, but slowly it'll come around and it will be much, much more efficient. Whether it was a good thing or a bad thing is irrelevant because the legislature has mandated it. So, you know, we, we're gonna do it, and it has to be done by that time. So there's gonna be a lot of work in the lead up to that. Okay?
Carol, any projects you could be working on here that are included in this thing or not included, or any personal projects for this department?
Just to see in the records management records archives.
All right. Anybody else have anything regarding the county clerk's department?
Sir.
All right. Any citizens?
Yes. Mr. Something that I find that's noticeable, we have to go both the county clerk and the district clerk's office, is number one, we have no fire suppression in this building. But they have not addressed since we've been in this building, the fire suppression system for county clerk and district clerk. We ever have a fire in this building and those records are damaged or burned by either water or fire, in either of those two offices, you know, we have documents that are just gonna, that are vital. Uh, and I think commissioner's court needs to acknowledge and put something in the budget, even an estimate, for a, a, uh, fire suppression system that would not damage, you know, the documents that are resident in this building.
Okay. Zane, do you hear anything on that?
Uh, yeah, because the way the building was designed, it would cost about $200,000 just in the county clerk's office, because of the cubic footage, when you do a suppression system, it has to involve the-
I do have fire systems in our budget, more alarm property protection, but not the suppression system. Uh, it's the cubic volume of the area, and it was like in the neighborhood of $200,000 for just the county clerk's room and almost $200,000 for the district clerk's office. And I did check into all this stuff, it's, it's very expensive. And that's the reason I was kind of concerned this year, just trying to get smoke detectors and, uh, more than one smoke detector that we have in the building, and that's what I had worked on, just basically where we would get notified.
Have you asked for multiple bids on that, or multiple, multiple questions?
We did each, each, accounting as a separate bid, uh, we just kinda ran out of time, built with it, as far as being a-
Why, I, I think that is something needed, wasn't it?
It, and it was, it was looked at, like, uh, while I didn't get any information from our personal, from our CSI, that kinda monitors our system right now, they never got back. I mean, the only ones that responded was shining their fire alarms, and they had like a diamond suppression system, and they came down here and did an evaluation, and because of the cubic volume of the room, uh, I was a little wary of bringing that particular system into it. Uh, there's been a lot of changes on suppression systems that are illegal now.
That's a significant amount of money, but-
Yes.
I, I think-
But we-
The point was, it's a significant risk that, that we're not allowed there.
And that's why I focused on the smoke detection systems, at least where the alarms go off, if I got fired, it gets started in this room.
What about handheld extinguishers for dirty operations?
Say that again?
Handheld, uh, extinguishers for dirty operations, what about that?
We're pretty, pretty good shape there in the building, well, up the code as far as suppression system. Right now, it's kind of a people fire alarm system here. You see a fire, you smell smoke, you go, you do a call. There's really nothing monitoring outside of that.
Basically, there isn't any fire detection or fire suppression, there's no way to here.
No. There's one smoke-
While they're here, are there, or do you have fire extinguishers around the rooms or anything?
Well, there's one right outside. Each, each section of the area has fire extinguisher cabinets.
Okay.
We got about, well, but as far as the suppression system, like, Mr. Yar was talking about it.
I know.
It's kind of what we used to call the halo system, which is illegal now, uh, because if someone gets caught in it, it can kill them, so just let us-
Let's readdress that when we get to maintenance department, 'cause that's where we're gonna be-
Well, I think it, it would be, is that, it would, if we have a fire in this building all weekend, even if somebody, even if it's occupied, and you get water on those records, that will destroy those records as fast as a fire.
Yes, sir.
The type of thinking that you're using right now is what we need to get away from, because these documents are not replaceable.
Well, I-
And a fire in this building, I don't care if this whole building burns down, which would not be a bad idea. But the records-
Carol, your records, how many are left on?
Almost all of them are remounted offsite as well. There's a, there's a backup offsite. Some of the older, um, birth and death, well, the birth records are in offsite, but like the death records, the older ones, they're not, and the merit files is not. But everything else is on a backup.
I would, I would like to suggest that commissioner's court add $250,000 to the county clerk's office and district clerk's office for discussion, simply because we can't replace those documents. And I, and the life of this county is in those two rooms.
Well, what I'm trying to understand, and she'll be asked, Carol, is how much of the documents that you're talking about, no doubt about their value, how much of that is being digitally reproduced and stored, you know, like in cloud or offsite or wherever?
All of the land records are, are backed up daily or weekly, and they're offsite. So everything we put in right now and everything we have had in the past as far as- So, everything we put in right now and everything we have had in the past as far as land records are image on the computer, and they're backed up and they're stored in Dallas and on another, in another location, and will be when we transfer to Tyler Technologies as well. The birth certificates are all registered in Austin, so we, we have access to them from there if something happened to the birth records that we have here that are for people that were born in Karnes County. There's, the record is in Austin of those as well. So, the, the older records, the death records, the original records when they were, um, put into the book, transferred into the book, those would be the ones that would be lost because they're the ones from the early 1900s, early late, or 1890s, those are the ones that would be lost, so for the historical value of those, that would be lost.
Are they, are they reportable or will they be reported digitally sometime?
I don't know, I'll have to check on that. I, I don't know about the ones, nobody ever asked for those, so I just know we have the books that where they were written in.
I want to see what the cost would be of doing that. And where, where you could say every document in my office is digitally recorded and is stored offsite, and even if we had a fire, we wouldn't lose it. And see how that compares to the fire suppression system that you're talking about.
Sure.
And, uh, you know.
That was kind of my understanding too, that we were kind of, almost it's to be backed up already.
Well, I want to, I want to have, uh, Carol actually get a good, say, estimate on how much it costs to record everything digitally recorded, everything that's in your office that is not now recorded.
Sure.
It's not going to be cheap, but, but then it's done, you don't have to worry about it. And then I think we, the only thing is, line of fire suppression in this year's budget, I think it would go into maintenance department. I, I know what building you're, what offices of the commission you're saying need to be protected, but that would be contracted far and, and everything out of the maintenance department. Any else? All right, elections department, estimated budget, and, uh-
Are you not going to do the veteran service, I just want to make sure?
Oh, pardon my, missed veteran services. I've, I've never heard any complaints, he seems to be burying those people around, uh, the veterans are disabled, they're at, need assistance, takes them up, doctors, San Antonio, things like that, there are people in there every day, you talk to them, unless he's out of town carrying someone else somewhere. Uh, I can't say I can evaluate how effective he's been, but assuming that he has been, and the expenses are roughly the same, he did get a salary increase, I'm going to survey. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, I just have a question, and it's going to apply to some others. When, why are we paying, um, health and life and retirement for somebody that works supposedly 30 hours a week? Is that normal? Is that considered, is 30 hours considered full-time in this department?
Can I answer that, Judge Butler? It's part of the Health Care Reform Act, if you, starting in 2015, we do a look-back period from January 1st of 2014 to December 31st of 2014, and if you work on average 30 hours, President Obama is making us give them health insurance. So, it's not something that, uh, the county is doing, it's part of the Health Care Reform Act. Okay, so, answer to my question.
You have questions? All right, we have consensus, gentlemen, about the veteran service department? Let's go to the elections department, estimated budget. Keep in mind now, as I told you earlier, all these salaries are being adjusted, not all of them, but some will be adjusted upward, the cumulative amount of which is about $500,000 over this budget, right here. We'll get to the effect of that on the total budget as we go on. Elections department, Karen?
Um, I had a, a few different things I wanted to just say, if you don't mind. Number one, um, in, when we did the salary survey, and I just want to make sure, because it seems like this is, and maybe it was an oversight, but as a technicality, when I presented my positions, I presented them as a different title than what they were, because I really believe they need to be reclassified with us being a new department, we didn't have titles, and so I've done some research and also trying to, um, get my employees lined up with the rest of the county, kind of, you know, similar titles and those kinds of things, the county structures that are out there, not only our county, but others. And so, um, one of the reasons I think that maybe some of our positions got overlooked when we, um, when that salary survey was used, um, is because I would like to title what is currently, I, I think her current title is elections administrator clerk, um, which is the position I have now, she's actually my deputy chief, and that's what I proposed in the salary survey, so it's not like I'm hiding anything, but I'm thinking it would need to be a reclassification to make sure that that gets put there, because the, but the job description that I gave was for the person who's currently, uh, or, or that position that's currently the elections administrator clerk, or whatever we're calling her today. And I just think it, it serves the county better, um, it's a better definition of those things. And if we can't do that reclassification, then they, we would have to have their positions resubmitted for the salary survey because they weren't considered within that salary survey. Um, because I was told that we could do that, and we're doing the salary survey, so that's what I did, and it's in the salary survey, it states that this was formally known as, you know, that kind of thing. So, I wanted to, um, touch base with you guys on that and make sure that I understand when I walk away from here today, uh, which positions I will be able to have within my, um, department. The second one that I am proposing-
I'm not sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Are you asking that one of them be named elections administrator, chief deputy clerk?
Yes.
And the other one just deputy clerk?
Yes, sir. That's how I proposed it for the salary survey as well, and it's, when I checked with other counties, that's how they titled their individuals.
Right.
So, then in other words, the chief deputy is a person, uh, just like in other departments that could step in and take my job if something happened to me, um, she could serve, probably, you know, I mean, wisdom assistance, anyway, like in any other department. So, I just wanted to, to claim that. Now, I did give you a new proposal of salaries for them, um, simply because of that 15% rule, and I don't know if it's going to make a difference because of the reclassification, I don't know how any of that stuff works, so I apologize. Um, so, I pulled only the, um, the minimum that was proposed by the salary survey, because currently, um, the, my DA chief deputy, that's what I titled her, anyway, is making only, I think it's $9.45 per hour, but the minimum for that position would be $13.92 per hour, so I was proposing to at least bring her to the minimum, however, that would, that would mess up your 15% rule, so I don't know how that would work.
At 15%, it'd be $10.56 per hour, a 15% raise-
Over the $9.45.
Right now. It'd be $10.56 per hour, as opposed to $9.45, as it is now. Although the position in the salary survey is proposed at $13.92 minimum and 15.31 mid.
Right.
But that position, or that individual currently makes $9.45 per hour, so 15% raise would increase it to $10.86.
The idea on the 15% cap rule is that we will revisit those salaries-
Yeah, and I completely understand-
-from further elevation of the area, just, we don't want to get started making huge increases in salaries, if it'll be anything, why don't we give them 15% this year?
I understand. And I'm good with that, I mean, I just want to, with the reclassification, if that would make a difference.
I think there are requests, I know the revised material, we were seeing from Seaking.
That's what I'm saying, they're, they're, in the salary survey, that is what they were classified as, and the salary survey, people knew that I was taking what my current position was, which was the, uh, DA clerk, and retitling them.
I may, uh, I might suggest that on anyone that, that the least right to do is to take them up to their, to the minimum salary range that's in the salary survey, even if it exceeds 15%. We're talking about elevating people to midpoint, I think 15% rule ought to apply, but if someone is getting paid so little now that they're even below the scale of the minimum payment, and the 15% rule would still keep them from getting to that minimum payment, I think we'll have to pay them the minimum.
Just, just to clarify, in the salary survey transition schedule, the seeking provided, they did classify-
I'll see you're a good gun, reclassify.
Well, they only classified her in, as an election clerk, they did not classify her as the chief deputy clerk in the transition schedule. In the job descriptions, they have two different descriptions of her employee, they only show as a deputy clerk.
I guess that's something I didn't see, because what I saw only had me two positions, which were my deputy chief and my clerk.
Well, we'll, we'll visit with that, but the one I'm looking at, thought this was from Seaking.
So, then move it to $13.92 an hour?
Well, I think that's, that's the minimum salary for that position, would be $13.92. Yes, ma'am?
I don't know who our salary survey is compared to, but I did some research on the computer, and in the proposed budget for DeWitt County, their county election administrator will be making $27,783, $83, and our election administrator is $37,000.
She, just, if I can clarify, she only works, she's a part-time position, she only works 30 hours, and she gets, uh, compensation for any time that she works over her 30 hours.
Yeah, but in that budget, I think there was like maybe $3,000 for overtime or $5,000 for overtime, uh-
So, that she only had to work 30 hours, I work 40 plus.
I know, but we're always compared to DeWitt in setting our tax, and he said he talked to Judge Fowler, and blah, 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 and all that. I'm just saying the comparison, how can their county, if it's the same size, or, uh, they've got the equal fur, just like we do?
Ma'am, well-
I don't understand how we're comparing-
I don't want to compare a part-time employee to a full-time.
That's, that's the only, and I, I understand that people are going to look at it that way, I just wanted to make sure, because I did do research on that as well.
No, well, what I'm going to do is the, is as, with the other position, yes?
Uh, I don't, nothing against the court, I don't even know her, but I don't understand if DeWitt County has a part-time administrator, uh, elections clerk, then why do we need a full-time?
You know, I don't know, maybe, you know, the county clerk's office used to handle the duties, I believe, regarding elections, and they may still utilize the county clerk's office to regulate Seaking, you know, I, I don't know their, I, I admit I have not thoroughly researched what the interaction is. If you were able to get assistance from the county clerk's office, it would eliminate some of the time requirements that a full-time elections administrator would have to comply with, but that would be, my, my guess is what's going on, I can, I'm sorry.
Judge Butler, one of the other duties that goes to the elections administrator here is voter registration, which was taken from the tax office. I don't think they did that in DeWitt County.
I'm really-
I'm not for certain, but I think the tax collector still does the voter registration.
All right. Does that make sense?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear all what you said.
Basically, she said another duty that Karen has as elections administrator here, that she doesn't think the elections administrator in, uh, DeWitt County has, is registration of voters, and, uh, that is still retained by the tax office in DeWitt County.
I think I'm not the same.
We think, not sure, but. Okay? We have a couple of-
Y'all got microphones, we take this new expensive system, if you're not getting them up, I can't hear half of what y'all are saying.
Um-
Amen.
How's this?
Thank you.
Sorry.
I can't hear.
Now, you, you use the fact that you have to eat the microphone, or it would be heard, I mean, it has to be right in front of your mouth, so I'll try to start doing that.
Well, the rest too, I mean-
Yep, everybody, lean up.
They got a lot of words.
Very good, thanks, sir. All right, my thought on this department's budget is to make the salary adjustments to take people to midpoint, unless the 15% rule prevents them from getting above the low-level point on the salary survey, and, uh, I don't see anything else in the budget that I haven't discussed.
I've got a couple of questions. Carol, I mean, excuse me, uh-
I'm not finishing my presentation, if you want to-
Oh, for me, I'm not sure that-
I know what, because I know what you're going to want, you're going to want justification, and I have justification for every item. Or do you have questions specifically about that?
I'm going to ask you a couple of questions that I can't understand why it's in the budget, but go ahead.
Okay, okay. Um, and then, um, so, anyway, I just wanted to check or mention that to you about the reclassifications of those. Also, uh, I did give you each a memo, um, to let you know, well, first of all, um, I'm assuming with what Judge just said today, that my salary will be moved to the mid-level and, and I will accept that, if that's what the, um, decision is, however, I do want to point out a couple of flaws, and that's what my, my memo states, and it has, it, uh, in the, um, in the, um, then it could be, just like I said, I think that there were some things that are overlooked when we look at the elections, uh, administration department, and I do have extra copies that people in the audience want copies of what I'm proposing here in my memo, that I'm going to, um, read for the commissioners. Carol has one also, um, because I wanted to go in permanent record. Um, I wanted to, um, to state that I, I still feel like, and I'm not, I'm not sure what's happening when those salary surveys go out, but it seems like, um, the, well, there's, there's a couple of things, um, the elections administration department, of course, I am an ele, uh, an appointed official, and, um, I realize that we're new, so I do understand that that's still going on here, but, um, I guess I'll just read my memo, and that pretty much says what I'd like to say. Um, "I'm confident that the commissioners' court and the citizens of Karnes County desire to establish an equitable environment for all county staff. To this end, I understand and support the use of the salary survey to accomplish the termination of pay rates based not only on similar positions within other Texas counties, but also a comparison to the local job market pay scales and rates." Because I have some question about the results, as they related specifically to the elections administration department, I thought I should bring those to your attention. These same two concerns were brought up by me following the return of that previous salary survey, which I know we don't want to talk about. Um, "With the elections administration position still being relatively new to most Texas counties," um, this is the first point, "it would be important to know which counties were included in the survey." Um, "I read in the recent survey that seven counties were included, but I, you know, for this department, it'd be important to understand which counties, do they have an elections administrator? If they do, does that department handle the same duties as ours does? What is the EA employment status? Um, in other words, is it part-time, non-exempt, et cetera?" And then my second concern is what logic was used to determine that the EA, being an appointed official, is of a lesser pay grade than a first assistant to another appointed official. "I can't help but notice that my pay, proposed pay rate, is set lower than others within the county who have less responsibilities and in fact are not head of their department. I do understand that factors like experience, education, and years with the county have their say, but I believe the county actually pays for contribution and productivity of each individual at the end of the day. As an appointed official, my salary should perhaps be set slightly below that of the elected and other appointed officials, but should definitely not be below that of a first assistant to another appointed official." And it, and just as a note, in the previous salary survey, where they did consider pay rates- And it, and just as a note, in the previous salary survey where they did consider pay rates, my pay grade was higher, was actually proposed as a grade higher than the said first assistant. And just to end that, I would like to kindly ask you to consider renewing the proposed salary for my position, even if you need to go back to Seeking and, and ask about those things. Taking into consideration the merit of having a fair and unbiased workplace, I am simply asking that the EA and our office be stacked proportionally and appropriately at the level it deserves within the Karnes County structure. I am merely expressing my wish to be compensated in a way which is fair and commiserate with the duties and the knowledge needed for the office to perform as is necessary and to compensate my time with reasonable and fair wage. I'm a hardworking and dedicated person, and my performance in reviews from election workers, party chairs, citizens, and other community leaders can testify to that fact. And so to that end, you'll see that in my proposal, I propose that perhaps my salary should be even a little bit higher than that mid-range, which would be forty-one-two. But I do understand that you all have a, a job to do. So I just wanted to mention that. And then I, I did want to go through my budget if you don't mind, because I do have justification for each and every line. And then I have a couple of questions I want to make sure, just to make sure that my budget...
Here's what I'd like to do, in the interest of brevity.
Okay.
Your department's taking too long here, okay?
Okay.
In the interest of brevity, why don't you just see if anybody had any questions about your items, and then you can decide if you need to justify.
Okay.
Don't justify something and nobody is answering any questions about it.
Okay.
Okay?
That's fine.
Go ahead.
Can you show your conference expense, travel, training for eight-five-hundred dollars?
Yes, sir. And I knew that that line would be questioned, I wanted to make sure that you understand. I don't like the title conference expense, but it's what's used in Karnes County. So that is actual travel and training, but not only for myself, but also if something should happen to me, with our election equipment being relatively new, the county clerk doesn't have experience using it yet either. So if something would happen to me, I got run over by a truck or whatever, we would need to plan to have some election support from heart to get us through at least one election. And so that's costly support. I'm hoping it won't happen. What's actually in there for myself is two thousand five hundred dollars, and that is for the SOS Election Law Seminar. There are two of those per year, one for the county and one for the two cities, I mean, city and political subdivision is the second one, I'm sorry. And then there are some other elected, election-related seminars and travel, you know, that I can go to and avail myself to. So I do have twenty-five hundred dollars really in there for myself. The other six thousand was moved up from another line, and that was more for the, again, for the election support if we should need it, not only our staff, but also our poll workers and, and everybody, whoever is involved in an election.
What line did you move that from?
I had it initially, I had it in a separate line called, and I was told to change it, Election Consulting.
Okay, and you also have your election machine maintenance, a ten thousand, do we just buy those machines? Aren't they still under warranty?
Yes, sir, but what I include in, in election maintenance, and perhaps that's wrong, but just with my thinking, is all of the, the maintenance charges that are automatically charged each year or the, the licensing fees. So that's what, exactly what those are, and I have all of those figures.
And the chapter nineteen funds, does it cover your travel, I mean, your, your, your education seminar?
No, it doesn't, not anymore of them. I've already used quite a bit of it, you know, for last year for what I did. It's not like it's an unlimited fund. So, you know, we're, we're, we don't have a whole lot of funds in there much anymore.
Last year, you said you used election expense of sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and six dollars. That's just the, the election expense, but your total budget was one forty-four, two forty-two. But, so where is this election expense? I mean, you're, we're already, you're down by two thousand dollars, but I'm trying to figure out where...
Probably cut the whole thing in half.
Well, not just in half, you didn't cut nothing in half. But I'm trying to figure out where, if we have sixty-seven thousand in expense for last year, and the year before, and prior year, we had twenty-two thousand. So what's, what's, I mean, where you got that sixty-seven or whatever it is going to be to, to run this budget? From primaries?
Where within here, within my budget? Yeah, again, there's no, he's correct, there are no primaries.
We're having one in November.
Uh, right, we have one election in November, and the only other possible election at this moment is a rollback election, if we should have that. So I moved that all into that two, that's about the twenty-six thousand, three hundred dollars. I did double-check on my numbers. And we are able to have cut, you know, last year I was still looking at what I had from the year before. So now I've been able to refine my budget much tighter and, and be able to consider that, you know, what the true expenses have been, what we've been able to bring them down to. With the new equipment, it's less costly, those kinds of things, and so that's been helping us to, to do that. Okay.
Anybody else have questions?
No.
Okay, and I have one more, just a comment that I forgot about. I wanted to make sure, I, I, you know, my computer expenses and my election equipment purchases have been moved to IT, I was told. And I was wondering if the election machine maintenance shouldn't also be moved to IT? I just want to be consistent with my budget, because it, it's confusing to me to make, but I just want to make sure I know where my budget items are. That's all.
You already have the election machine purchased. We're not going to go out and buy new ones.
No.
Nor are we, you know, assume the manufacturer or the seller is in charge of your maintenance?
Yes.
I don't think we need to do that unless, until we have to replace your machinery.
Right.
If we're due, that's where it'll go. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I think with that budget as it stands, with modifications, hey, to midpoint, I would suggest we go to that. Anybody have any comments?
No.
Do we have a consensus?
Yes.
All right. Everything from posted stamps, workers' count,
We had also discussed adding a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar contingency.
Yeah, let me address that with everybody. In reviewing the comptroller's work product on budgets, Susan Combs, an old friend of mine, and she's been comptroller now for quite a few years, and she has suggested that all county budgets contain a contingency amount to handle certain situations that come up. There, there are all kinds of things I can think of. But to handle situations that you have not been able to anticipate putting in your budget without getting an emergency budget amendment, and you just line out, line item that money out of the contingency to whatever expenses come up. I've thought of any number of things that you could have some kind of emergency development where you gotta buy some new equipment, something breaks, server that goes dead or whatever, and you've got to buy it. You can take it out of contingency. If, say, an employee left, an employee or officer left and needed to be replaced, and you needed to raise the salary in order to attract a good candidate for that job, or if anybody is trying to replace an employee and cannot find a decent person to come work for that job, well, you might get some money out of that contingency fund to make sure that we're able to hire a qualified person. Any number of, anything you can think of might be subject to this contingency fund. It cannot be used other than through a vote of Commissioners' Court in an open meeting, Commissioners' Court meeting. But there would be that availability of some of these little funds. Now, the comptroller's office recommends like five percent of your budget, budgetary amount. I'm, I'm not recommending anything like that. But I was thinking, at least for starters, because the county's never had it, that we could use an amount like two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and see if that doesn't head off some of these emergency budget amendments, things like that that we've had in the past. Because no matter what we're doing, I'm saying here today, we're not going to anticipate everything that could happen, that money's going to be needed for. And if the money, if they don't happen, the money that's left over goes into our savings account, our unencumbered funds for expenditures in the future if it's needed. And other than that, everything that's in this budget will be covered by revenues the county gets, and there won't be anything in the budget that asks for revenues that aren't planned out. This one is an unplanned revenue. You don't know exactly what you're going to use it for. Am I having any questions about that?
I know. I just have one question. Herb, does that answer what, some of the things you talked about?
You know, I don't have an answer to that. Right? Interesting, if this is the place to address it, is that the Commissioners' Court and the new county judge have the ability to look at the possibility of ways to manage the business of the county more efficiently than they're doing at this time. When I start talking about this, I get past the level of talking on an individual, and I try not to personally attack anybody, but unfortunately, or fortunately for us, the Commissioners' Court is responsible for all of the finances of the county. And the new county judge and the Commissioners that are on board in two thousand and fourteen and fifteen really need to have the capability of making some major changes in our budget structure at this time. We're talking about an outside audit of forty thou, and we've got two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars in lawyers' fees and accounting fees in this budget to manage or help to manage the business of this county. In the past, we have let other people do it, and the Commissioners may want to do that in two thousand and fourteen and fifteen. But the county judge and the new county Commissioners need to have the opportunity to make a change in our everyday workings of the county. And it may take Commissioners' Court that hires an outside individual or an individual that's hired full-time to manage the responsibilities of our finances. But there needs to be an independent accounting by the Commissioners' Court of all of the assets, liabilities, and the spending of the county, and it needs to be addressed on a monthly basis by the Commissioners' Court and nobody else. And if it takes additional money, I ask that you look at it as a possibility and place it in this budget to not tie the hands of the next county judge and Commissioners as to how they will manage the business of the county. If this is the place it needs to be placed in, I ask you to seriously consider that as a step forward in trying to manage the business of this county. And it's, it's, we're going to step on some toes when you do it.
Herb, I will discuss that as we proceed along in the budget proceeding. I agree with what you just said, but there is a specific place and specific way I've got to suggest to the Commissioners how to do that.
I, I didn't know whether this was the spot or whether it was...
It's a good introduction.
I apologize for saying that.
No, no, that's fine, that's a good introduction. We will be talking about that. Sure.
Thank you.
Can we back up for just a second? Karen, when you said your county election expenses for elections, does that include the possibility of a rollback election?
Yes, ma'am.
Karen, I got to do that question, but also, the election administrator, you know, you're a partner, but who do you report to?
The county commission, Elections Commission, which is the county judge, the county clerk, the county tax assessor-collector, and the two party chairs.
And the, but the, on the county side, do you consider the county judge to be the, the go-to person for anything? Or who would you consider? Because...
I do, I just consider the Commissioners' Court.
There's a question about, about, you know, the, your office hours maybe come and play, or questions about, you know, who accounts for the time and stuff like that.
I just expect the Commissioners' Court to rule me. I mean, you know, as with any other elected or appointed official, anything that I do, I would come to you guys to, if we needed to make changes or if y'all had any issues with that. That's, that's my opinion, I mean, that's the way I handle it.
One go-to person is what I'm, what I'm asking today.
I don't.
Liaison between the court and you.
I don't. I'm, I'm that liaison, in my opinion.
Okay. Anything else on the non-departmental budget? Let's see, we've got, I believe it's a hundred thousand dollars for forensic audit. The county's finances that have been being called for. We have, and the contingent fee, the contingency, if the expense of that audit or something else ran over, that'll be one place to get the money to pay for.
Excuse me, that forensic audit, that's the one we signed the petition for that might be for a full audit? For the full audit in the future, if necessary?
The audit is being performed at someone else's direction, not me, and I can't. But it is a full forensic audit, it's not just any one particular thing, okay? They're, they're looking in there in as far as...
This is one that's already ongoing?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not the one we signed the petition for that you said at that time you'd put the money in the budget in case we needed a full audit?
We are, we have now concluded we do need a forensic audit. I mean, I don't know what full audit versus forensic means.
That's what I'm asking.
But we are, we're doing a forensic audit. There's, there's no particular, they're not limited to anything. They're looking into all finances of the county and the way in which we're keeping our county records, everything.
Now, but we're just looking into that. Is it auditors, outside auditor, attorney?
Yes, it's an outside auditor.
Auditors, outside? Because at one time we talked of attorney, but now...
Others, we got that too, okay? I can't, I really can't, I've been advised not to go into all the details of what we are conducting. Forensic audit, someone else is actually in charge of getting it done, being done independently of me, independently of Juana.
Well, I asked for a contract, if there was a contract with the county for this attorney, or if, you know, I called their office and I was directed to call to the county attorney.
Okay.
And the way he advised him, he wasn't, I don't know. I asked him for a contract and he couldn't tell me if there was one on record. If you, if you contract with an attorney, wouldn't you have a contract?
Most attorneys insist on professional services contract. I don't know. Do you have anything on that?
There is a, an agree, a letter agreement signed, and I did not release his name because it is an ongoing investigation, involves other departments other than myself. And because of that, I was restricted in what I could release at the time. And I'm still restricted because there's other departments involved in this other than the county attorney's office. And the possibility of looking at removal... than the County Attorney's Office and the possibility of looking at removal of a county official, and that is a reason for the hesitancy at this time. It's not a secret. It's a letter agreement between the lawyer and the county as far as the expense or the salary is concerned.
But the, the lawyer that you're talking about is not the only entity conducting the investigation.
That is correct.
It's a law that's very clear to you.
Will this audit get our books back into ballot?
I'm certainly hoping so.
I mean, that's, that's what we want, the availability of our.
And I'm going to be telling you about another step I'm going to try to urge the county to take to do that, because you're absolutely right, Ms. Wloski. Makes you feel the balance up to the neck, okay? And I've got an idea how to get that done. I'll share that with you shortly, okay, as we proceed through the budget. All right. Anything else on non-departmental? Carnes County Budgetary Contributions. The Fourth Administrative District, the Soil and Water Conservation District, NACO, AICI, Economic Development, several things. I had a question. I get emails addressed to Barbara Shaw regarding the sister cities. Now, do you mind knowing what that is or if we can get any benefit out of it?
We have had a sister city in Poland for the last 10 years, possibly. At one point in time, that's when Judge Pawelik was in office, and that's why it initiated. I don't know of any actual benefit that we've received besides the recognition of having a foreign sister city.
I believe we, I believe back then we spoke of that Luana was because we have the Polish settlement here in Panama Ria, so we became a sister city with them, and we've been ever since. Judge Pawelik, I think it was the county attorney, was also took, took a two-week tour over there and visited them. Is that right, Wloski, Commissioner Wloski? Ex-commissioner, out of respect. So we've been sister cities to them for over about 12 years, 10, 12 years.
Also, they came and visited here with us.
Yes.
Let them run their city.
That was, what year was that? About 2003?
That's a bit far back.
Yeah, I can't remember either. Been a long time.
Out of curiosity, what's the name of the city?
I don't know.
What is the name of the city, Jack?
If I would remember, I might not even be able to pronounce it. I'm not sure. I remember that, I remember that at the time, and I am aware that we have a sister city in Poland and the reason why we had it, because we're the Polish settlement here in Panama Ria. But I don't, Darrell, do you remember the name of it? No?
Yeah, I don't know your sister better than that.
Somebody could probably go online and pop it up real quick.
There's a plaque or something somewhere that's got it written on it.
Yeah, I mean, if anyone wants to do anything about that, if it's not worthwhile pursuing, that's fine. But anything else? All right. We have consensus before this section of the budget.
Yes.
District Clerk Department's estimated budget. Is Denise here?
Oh, she's six days away.
Oh, she is? Is anybody here prior?
Yes.
Come on up.
I mean, you don't have to say anything, but I thought if she had any input, any changes you wanted to make or anything like that.
Okay.
I know she's been trying to clear her records, you know, digitizing everything. Are y'all on track yet, or?
We're working on it.
I know. But I mean, do you know if she's, has the, that's going to cover some of the, of the needs for the digitizing?
Also, I think the clerk's offices, both the district and county, are, are bearing the brunt of a lot of this activity here in the county. Their, their job during slow times may not be that hard, but it's gotten a lot harder in the last couple of years. You know, those young ladies working in there with Carol and Denise are quite busy. They have to concentrate on what they're doing. They're now getting ready to have to convert to wireless filing of all court cases. It's going to be a real challenging time for them for the next couple, couple of years at least. You know, I thought when all the land had leased, got leased in Carnes County, all that activity in the county clerk's office would die down, but it hasn't because now what they do is they come flocking in there to clear up title issues that they have with their leases, you know? Every time they drill a well, a bunch of people go in there and have to clear up the title and research title issues. So it's an ongoing problem for them. And I think they're, I've never heard any complaints from oil gas operators or land men, so I guess I must be doing a pretty good job. Just as the piece, number one?
Just, just a thought. It seems that the clerks, deputy clerk and the other clerks in both county clerk's office and the district clerk's office, what's the hourly rate for those clerks? I mean, it sounds like it makes about $10 an hour.
It's low, it's going to be adjusted. These are the fees. These are some of the numbers that are going to be adjusted up to the midpoint level. And they're, they're going to be a little higher.
Okay.
I thought the word was like, you make more than that dairy queen. So we're, we're trying to get these people to make a decent salary and can get the kind of young ladies we want there working for us. Doesn't wrong with working in dairy queen if that's what you want to do. But, all right. JP one?
JP one, Judge, she sent a packet to me over the weekend, and I gave every Commissioner a copy of one. She's, her budget, she's requesting a full-time clerk, and I agree with her need to basically, all the JPs so far through August of this year have collected $741,239 in fees. JP one and JP three have really been the ones that have been getting the brunt of most of the, of most of the cases filed. As since March of 2014, when we increased the Sheriff's Office Department and they created the workload of the, the traffic deputies, whatever you would call them, and with the influx of the, of the task force for DPS that comes in with the scales when they do their commercial vehicle enforcement, the caseloads have steadily been increasing. If you look at your monthly reports that the JP submit, each of the JP's caseloads have steadily been rising. Most important has been JP one and JP three. Those are the two that have been catching on. Not to say the other two JPs haven't been giving their parallel, but most of the cases that are filed, they've wanted three because of the, of the area of enforcement. Again, you know, they were only, they were only budgeted last year to collect $475,000, but they've exceeded, you know, the $741,000. And the JP one's load, visiting with her, she's stating that she's going to need a full-time employee to help offset some of these, you know, help process these cases to get the due process completed. The, her caseload as of this month already is, she's up to, I think she's had 125 cases filed. That was last week already, and that's not, the month is not complete. The Sheriff's Office has contributed to the increase with their enforcement as well as again with the commercial motor vehicle. So with that, I'm asking for a full-time clerk for her, for her and whatever you, you know, you come up with on the, on the salary survey for the, for the clerk in her present work.
I agree.
I agree.
How did you?
Any discussion about JP's? I don't know if I ever paid that much attention to JP offices in the past, but they actually are kind of a profit center for the county. You know, they, they're a department that you invest in, where they return your investment with enforcement of traffic penalties. And the better job they do bringing, bringing in fines and, you know, hopefully discourage, not only do they hopefully discourage bad driving on our roads, they also have the effect of bringing in quite a bit of money for the county. So they, go ahead.
Actually, they collect over a million dollars because of the money collected, $351,000, well, $320,000 has been sent to the state.
Yep.
So it's, there's quite a bit of.
We're going to keep all of it, but a lot of it. Yes, Brad?
And they're also the ones that would handle the enforcement of the load.
Right.
They, they would be involved in additional revenues to cover that.
So, any, on any of the other JPs, other than the salary modifications we're going to make, was there any other input from any of them? Karen?
Are we down with JP one?
Yes. Who's up next?
We all have my comments. Basically, I'm just going over what I presented back to you all on Friday. I am also asking for a little bit more help, except I'm not asking for a full-time employee. I'm asking for additional hours for my two part-timers. Because since our meeting with the County Judge and the Auditor back in May, we were informed that the Sheriff's Office is now creating a full-time traffic division, and this is going to increase our workload even more than in the last fiscal year. I've got a chart there, and it shows that my office has increased, I'm just going to go for the last couple of years. In 2011, we increased 71%. This last year, we've increased 66 more percent, and we still have this to add to that. What I'm asking is for an additional four hours for one clerk and additional, it was going to be 10 hours, but if that's going to affect the insurance, then I can change to either eight or nine to keep it under the thirty. So I can go with the 29. It's not always going to be those hours, it's just sometimes when I have to come to court, we have a lot more court now because of all the CDL drivers, and I need to be able to keep one office, my office, open and have one clerk there answering the phones and dealing with the walk-ins. The other clerk needs to come with me because when we have jury trials and quite a few more trials and more often, I need assistance there so that I can actually stay on the bench and not be jumping back and forth playing both positions. And then the only other thing I'm asking for is a small increase in my conference because we found out that the registration fees for each conference is an additional $50 per person, and the locations changed a little bit. They're going a little further north, so it's going to be a few more miles. So I'm only increasing that $268.
What, $1,200?
Uh, $1,200, an even amount. That includes me going to JP school for 20 hours, my deputy clerk going to clerk school for 20 hours, and my deputy clerk going to Hill Country Software update once a year. So it's three different schools for $1,200.
The other two, be part of the Tyler technology as well?
What was that?
Well, y'all have been part of the Tyler technology as well, some of that.
They weren't included in that quote, weren't they, Herb? The JPs were included in that quote from Tyler technology here.
That's pretty much all I have. Just asking for the additional hours, four hours for the one, eight, nine hours for the additional, the second, third, and a few hours, a few months, a few dollars for the conference.
So eight, four, nine, twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine, it's fine. I didn't know that about the thirty hours.
Are the, the work that the JP is doing, the income that they bring into this county, are they adequately compensated?
Well, I think they're, they're going to be receiving some raises, some fairly significant raises.
So is this what they get now, or is this proposed salary? Proposed.
Proposed.
And your proposed budget is, what's proposed?
Well, the mid, you know, here it says 34,673. That's a little more than what you have now.
That's what was advertised in the official advertising. That's what was advertised in the official advertising, the elected officials.
We have, someone has to hear me, I can use your microphone if you can't hear.
And not just you, Judge, I think all the other.
Yeah, everybody, everybody needs, it's a practice when I use this.
We'll, we'll be happy to keep reminding, I think.
Luana, you're speaking softly.
Really?
Yeah.
I don't think y'all want me this loud.
We do, we like to hear you. That's something that's important.
We have a requirement by the local government code that before the proposed budget is accepted, there has to be an official notification in the local media of anticipated proposed increases in any elected official salaries. And that is what was published in the paper, the $34,673.60 for the JPs.
One note, but does that mean that that's the salary that we will get? It can't be changed?
Correct.
I recall last year y'all posted it, and then there was some that were not safe, that did not say it was printed in the paper.
Judge, we are going to, we're going to research that. My thought was we'd take all of the elected and un-elected employees of the county to that midpoint undiscussed, limited to the 15% raise, can't, can't go more than that. The only question that arose was, can I do it with, with having already published numbers, you know, about what the public officials, the elected public officials' salaries would be? I'm trying to get an opinion from an attorney on that to tell me whether I could even make those modifications.
Well, I know that last year, the salaries were printed in the paper, and they did not go with what was printed in the paper for one elected official. I recall that.
I, I can't say what was done last year, I cannot, but I, it's my desire to make that modification, but I can't do it if it's against the law, you know? So I've got to decide if I, I've got to talk to somebody who can authoritative tell me if I can do it. It doesn't prevent me from making those modifications to un-elected people, but the ones like you or like the office holder, since we published that notice in the paper, I may be hung with it. I don't know. That may be all we can do. And it wouldn't be, you know, it's not that many elected officials, the jumps aren't that big, it wouldn't be a huge deal financially. But I don't want to do it and have somebody bring a suit and join the county campaigning people that much and that, fight that, spend money doing that. And I'll take blame for it if I set those salaries inappropriately. I meant to hit midpoint on everybody, and in some cases, the survey, the way it was structured, it didn't do it. And when I tried to make those adjustments, I can prove, rank and file staff, but it may or may not be something I can do with the elected officials, okay? So we've got to wait and see. I'll, I'll know by the end of this week.
The only other comment is, it was made, comment earlier that the Elections Office, she said she should be paid less than the elected officials. She's already being paid more than us. She makes $37,000 as opposed to our $34,000. I just wanted to add that at this point.
I got you. I've, I've had, one thing I don't want to do.
Thank you, ma'am.
For sure. For sure, is get into a contest, you know, a turf war or anything like that where people are saying, well, they're making more than me. We tried to get as objective of information as we could from somebody about what midpoint salaries for these broad ranges of jobs would be. And take out, you know, any jealousy or anything else. It is, it's gonna be what it is. And then adjustments in the future will be made off that base. And I know that there are certain appointed positions that probably pay more than certain elected positions. I'm sure that's true. And that's because over a broad spectrum of counties, that's the way it's done.
Just one short comment. I would ask if the commission court review the salaries of the JP's because these are, these poor people are, and just one or two other officers actually pay for their existence. And, you know, they spend long hours listening to these cases. And, you know, they, thirty-four thousand dollars a year to do what they do, it doesn't seem to be adequate. And I would ask the commission court, take the time and see if they can revisit this problem and at least bring them up to a reasonable wage.
Well, it would be my desire to take them to the mid-range, like everybody else, unless the notice which I was responsible for recludes me from doing it.
No, no, how about probably go ahead and notice?
So. Yeah, we, we have to do it within a certain period of time. It may not be anybody who care, but, you know, if somebody, if it happened and I was not legally allowed to do it. There's some conflicting language. A lot, there's language in the local government codes that says the commissioners can make whatever modifications they feel is warranted to the proposed budget. And we can make the modifications. But it seems strange then that they've got this requirement. You publish this notice and all this stuff about elected officials, if it had no teeth in it. So, I don't know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna investigate and we'll see. JP, any other JP budgets to discuss? Come on up.
I'm sorry?
Microphone, please.
The only changes in salaries, that's it. Correct? Do you want the full-time or part-time?
Well, I had asked for a full, for a full-time clerk, but I was told that a county this size, three clerks would be too many. But I do see that I was allowed a part-time, but it doesn't tell me how many hours.
Budgeted twenty hours per week.
Twenty? Does that add to the four?
I would ask for at least twenty-eight, Judge. We're, we're extremely busy. I know Shelby and I know, I can tell you, he's looked at everything that we've turned in and he can tell. He knows that the caseload has increased extremely. And I'm sure the others can also see it.
Well, commissioners, do you wanna?
That's fine.
Elevate, give her a twenty-eight hour, part-time, third.
I agree. The amount of workload for that, again, if we're precinct one, increasing three, if two, we almost double.
All right? And then we'll make the salary adjustments for the survey. Okay?
Thank you, Judge, thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you, Judge. Thank you, Judge. JP four.
I don't believe we had any changes on this, but.
Okay. Any issues about the JP four? Or are we, are we consensus on?
On JP four, I think not, it's not a budget thing, but just a reminder, we need to get an agreement drawn up with the city of Runge for the building that we use, as well as we need to continue getting that agreement with the city of Kennedy. Any, any non-over-county buildings, I guess, judges? We have an understanding of what we're responsible for and not carrying some other expense that maybe don't our way.
When I last talked to the city manager of Kennedy, his indication was that they might make something short-term, of course, but did not wanna do anything long-term. They needed the space. And did you get that indication, talk to him to?
That's the indication I got. They talked about giving us that estate until we, and he's got the space at the EMS building completed. They thought they could let us do that. We have moved a lot of the, are in the process of moving some old records out of the city judge's space at this time. And we should complete that this week, so that has helped some. It's, it's opened up some space that they can use. So we're trying to work through to keep from having to move the JP from that space before they move to the permanent space in the EMS building.
You're talking about JP four?
JP four.
Right, you don't wanna move it to the EMS building, truly?
No, it's Judge Stewart.
Right, I understand.
Kennedy.
I thought we went on four here. Right, right regarding, that's what we're talking about.
This is one of those we have very low control over.
Yeah.
We have to pay for the BA's office, our share of the courts, court-appointed attorneys, autopsy expenses, a long list of things.
On the autopsies, the JP's, if maybe Herb, somebody can help me understand something, is that? JP's, they order the autopsies?
Correct.
And the JP, but if they're within the city limit, does the city incur any cost for that, that need?
Not now.
Shouldn't it?
But you pay for it by the, the JP's are the ones that order it now.
Okay. But, but if we order something in the city, does the, the city incur the cost back to the county? Or should they, or is that just a one-ease situation where it's territorial?
I think that you just gonna have to look at, talking to the city commissioners and see if you can get some kind of agreement that's different from what we have now. That's about all that I can tell you. We pay for the emergency services presently for both cities. And, and that's where, that's what we're doing right now as far as the autopsies are concerned. There's thirty thousand for that and there's a pickup and transport to the ME at San Antonio. There's another stuff in, you know, I'm just, I'm just asking, trying to make sure that we aren't being, we're out there for what the cities could help any offsets of this cost. If it's in the city. Maybe so. Most of the autopsies that are performed are made for the purpose of determining cause of death. And most of those causes of death are addressed by district court and the district attorney's office. So if you've got a murder or you've got a death that is unaccompanied and there's really not an answer as to the cause, those are addressed with this autopsy. And most of them are for the benefit of the county or the district prosecutors. Herb, only a JP can order an autopsy on the city. That's correct. So that's, that's a real problem. But we can try. I don't know that there's any reason why you can't sit down with the commissioners from the cities and ask them for some help. All they can do is say no.
In the past, that has been, the response was no because a county officer ordered it, so it was a county cost.
That's, that's been my experience, but they don't want somebody who's controlling their costs.
Right? Any others?
No. Are they good?
Well, consensus for the youth, women, veterans?
Yes.
Judge, did you bring to their attention the increase on the juvenile probation funding? It went up approximately eight percent this year. The total contribution by the county will be eighty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and three hundred twenty-seven dollars and sixteen cents.
What was it last year?
Uh, seventy-eight, I believe.
County attorney's budget. Herb discusses briefly with you and told you we're wanting to make adjustments in those salaries based on reaching midpoint in that survey rather than some skewed methodology that's used apparently.
I didn't understand and I can't cure as well as I can treat. But there was a fifty or five hundred thousand dollar figure that was thrown out. The one that you indicated, is that the cost of the salary increases from two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen?
That is the increase, approximate increase between the minimum proposed salary, the current proposed salary to the minimum with the fifteen percent cap and adjustments as opposed, proposed.
That is not the midpoint.
Well, I, the part that, there's a proposed budget now.
Yes. It's gonna be five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand over that proposed budget, is that?
Yes.
Is that my understanding?
That's correct.
Am I correct in that?
You're correct.
What is the fifteen percent rule and why is it there?
Fifteen percent rule is that if someone is below the midpoint, but to get them to midpoint would involve a single-year raise of more than fifteen percent, we don't do it in one year. We, we do, we raise fifteen percent this year and then if it needs further adjustment in subsequent years, the commissioners can raise it to get it up to that midpoint at that point.
So the, the salary schedule for the individuals that are drawing between nine fifty, ten fifty, eleven dollars an hour, if that salary increase is more than fifteen percent, that's all they get?
Unless that still is below the minimum rate. Okay? So there's a minimum, maximum, a minimum midpoint and maximum on the salary survey. What we're trying to do, Herb, is get everybody to midpoint. But we have to use the fifteen point, the fifteen percent rule to elevate them. You know, we don't wanna give people thirty percent raises in a year. So, but the only exception I'd make to that is that using the fifteen, if you're so underpaid, that if you only got a fifteen percent raise, you'd still be below the minimum on that salary range. Then I think you have to go to the minimum.
There's a big difference between fifteen percent of ten dollars and fifteen percent of thirty dollars an hour. And that's the problem, you know, that I see in what we're doing. If we don't go to the mid-level as the survey originally was set out to do. The survey was set out to adjust the salaries of the employees for the county based upon the surrounding counties and the prevailing issues that are present in the workforce. That was the reason for the twenty-five thousand dollars. But to adjust it to fifteen percent after you have paid twenty-five thousand, you might not even have the salary survey. It doesn't affect or doesn't help anybody except a very few. And that's the issue that I'm concerned with. If the salary survey was for the purpose of adjusting the salaries of the employees of the county, not my office necessarily, because I understand what you're saying about my office, but for throughout the county, are you raising the level of the salaries up? As we're talking about the JP's, as we talk about the employees that work in the sanitary department. All of those departments are important. And if they're not put it to me mid-range of that salary survey, regardless of what the fifteen percent rule is, it's, the salary survey has little or no effect upon what we're doing at this time.
I disagree with that. How many people hit fifteen percent?
We, we hit nothing. If you look at the salary, if you look at what's happening, we are not addressing the issue that the survey was set up to address.
Well, in other words, we are, we may not be addressing it as fully as you would like it to be in one year. You know, the old saying is wrong weather's built in a day. That means if you're gonna make dramatic changes, it takes a while to get them done. You can't get done all in one time. And I think we, I think it makes sense, Herb, as well as trying to keep this budget within numbers that are reasonable. You know, we, we can't do everything we wanna do. It's okay, I can drop down all the highest level, you know, but that's not, that's not reasonable and we can't do it. This employment firm that we utilize said that across the board, the people they advise, they advise them not to raise anybody's given salary more than fifteen percent in one year. That that would be ill-advised and that ought to be handled in installments. This year, next year, so you give them up to mid-level.
Well, that mid-level be then in a couple of years? That mid-level won't let change.
It might. I think we can get a brief update, we can get a brief update on those positions from the, without spending that much money on those positions. Hey, we got to turn somewhere. And just last year, Herb, they gave everybody a five percent salary increase. That wasn't, that, that's a lot bigger help than that.
But Judge, that was after twenty-five thousand dollars in the salary survey that went south.
That's right. This one's being utilized, reused in this.
And we had another twenty-five thousand dollars invested in another survey that is managed by a fifteen percent rule. And I don't know how you can get those people that are on the bottom rung of this ladder past the level of at least paying their rent. And that's the part that concerns me, not only my office, but other offices. And it's not that I'm pointing fingers at any other offices, it's just that I'm saying to the court that if you're gonna have a salary survey, why not follow it?
We did, Herb, that was part of their recommendation, is that we use the fifteen percent rule. I didn't invent that. They did. Now, if you want to throw away the fifteen percent rule and just use our midpoint, I'd suggest you try to persuade, that's what we are doing.
That's what I'm trying to do, Judge.
Okay.
It's very, I was not, I hope I didn't misunderstand. I, I might have misunderstood what I was talking about. I asked the commissioners to do away with the fifteen percent rule, look at mid-level salary suggested by the survey and work within that mid-level range. For not only my office, but for the.
We would have to recalculate the total budgetary impact and see what that would be. Now, Herb, I understand that's gonna involve some really substantial pay increases for some individuals. And, and I think that's where you run into problems. Where if somebody gets a forty percent jump in pay and everybody else is limited to no more than fifteen percent.
I think you're pretty.
And so, Mark, that might.
I think you're pretty well locked in as far as the elected officials are concerned.
I'm not talking about the elected officials, I'm talking about everybody.
I might say that last year, that was not exactly the case with the spread across the board, five percent. It did apply majority-wise, but there were some that got fifteen percent and there was one office that actually got thirty percent pay increase. And everybody knows that.
Judge, I'm really asking for equity. I'm not asking for anything that's beyond that. In the level of pay for these employees, not only my office, but there's a lot of offices that face the situation that my office is faced with. I have employees that are living with someone else because they can't pay rent. And that's the, and that's the issue that we're trying to address because all of these employees, not from office necessarily, but all of them are important. And they're doing a heck of a job at this point.
Is their salary currently in the range of minimum to maximum? Are they higher than?
No.
No, they're not even in minimum on some of it.
Richard has said to bring everybody up to minimum. Richard has said to bring everybody up to minimum.
No, he's not.
No, he did. He said, he said...
That's the absolute minimum. If you're, if, if the fifteen percent rule keeps you under minimum, you go to minimum. Okay? If, if, if the fifteen percent rule keeps you going midterm or mid-level, well then, you know, if you're going to go, you're going to ask for your limit.
Judge, is that true?
That is what he said this morning. That is not what's in the proposed budget. I will have to go back and readjust all the salaries.
See, that's the thing. We're talking about apples and oranges, Judge, and I'm not sure that we're on the same page as to what we're doing. You, you, you follow me, Judge? If we don't get to the mid-range, we are not adjusting the salaries of the employees throughout the county to a level that is recommended by salary survey. If they're going to say Herb Hancock's worth ten bucks an hour, and then you're going to say ten bucks, ten bucks an hour, and you're going to say fifteen percent of that, and that's all you get if he's worth twenty bucks an hour in the salary survey, that's what I'm talking about. And I, I think that what I'm hearing and what you're saying, Judge, may be if, if, if you're going to get the folks to mid-range, I don't think anybody can complain. We would like to go to top range, of course, but we can't. But if you get everybody at mid-range, you at least adjust some of the lower salaries up from the bottom to a level of at least existence. And that's my concern.
Essentially, the actual county attorney, seems to be there's a little contradiction in the, in the discussion from the commissioners' court because this morning we did talk about, you know, we have to pay, we have to pay people that full wage in order to attract them to, uh, to public service. If we've got people making ten, eleven dollars an hour, you know, they, as you stated, they can work at Dairy Queen and make twelve, thirteen, fourteen dollars an hour. And I think if, if we could, I think we could at least afford to pay our county employees, even the, the, the most inexperienced, newest county employee, you know, has to make something, you know, if, you know, we have the county, the JP's that, that, uh, don't make as much as the elections administrator, but they earn their own salary. I mean, I think we need to, we need to be, uh...
Well, I, I understand. The way I understand what both of you think about it is to recalculate everything based on everybody going to midpoint. Even if they're underpaid forty percent, you go to midpoint.
We have to bite that bullet soon enough.
You go to that.
I don't, I, Judge, I'm...
No, I'm not arguing with you on that. I just want to make sure that's what you want, so I can understand it. Yes, ma'am?
This has nothing to do with, I mean, it's my problem because I choose to insure my husband on my insurance. My take-home pay from the county for two weeks is four hundred and fifty dollars. So can people survive on four hundred and fifty? So that's nine hundred dollars a month that I take home from the county because I insure my husband because it's required.
What did you take home if you did not have your husband on insurance?
Uh, I don't know.
Four hundred dollars a month, I think, is what, I think this...
Because his is four hundred, so about eight hundred, sixteen hundred. If I did, like I said, it's not anybody's fault that I choose to insure my husband, but because it's required by law, his job doesn't operate, I'm taking home four hundred and fifty every two weeks.